Welcome to our board meeting. And we want to thank Principal Vickery and his staff for hosting our meeting today. And with the student artwork all around us, I hope you take time to check it out because it's really amazing. We have awesome kids. And right now, we have a guest, Jacob McGuinness, who is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jacob. Oh, wow. Sorry about that. Whoa.
Really wanted to say thank you.
Really want to say thank you. So just a few housekeeping things. Do we have any members of the media here that would like to introduce themselves? We'd like you to introduce yourself if you're from the media. Okay, great. Just a reminder, please mute your cell phones. Also, those alarms that go off even when you mute your phones, just to let you know. If you're wanting to participate in public participation, we do have signup cards over here that you will need to fill out before you speak. Just a reminder to turn mics on before you speak and remember to turn them off, especially for those who are at the podium. And also as a reminder, all of the award winners, we're inviting you to come up afterwards to take a group photo with the Board of Directors. And now we have our wonderful principal, Mr. Vickery. He's going to share some things about the high school.
All right, there we go. Thank you very much. Before I get started, I have to take care of a little bit of business. Last year, when I came up here to give this presentation, I got up here and I was standing at a podium that wasn't real great. I was looking at it and during, I didn't want to lean on it too hard, you know, it was one of those things. And I thought, man, we can do better than this. And so I went to our woodshop teacher, Gene back there. And I said, hey, Gene, we have some kids that maybe want to do something like this. And they got together, created the design, did it like a project that they would be doing for hiring and, and, and working on it. And I'm going to have Adam Shoup, if he's here, I don't see him. Keegan Myers, and then Jacob Michael, come on up. And tonight, we are going to unveil the podium that these kids did all on their own. And go ahead, my friend. Take it off. Nice job. Thank you. I'd love to turn it around, but it took Mr. Begard, to send myself to get it off the dolly. So we need to do some modifications to it to make it a little bit more movable. But you, as you can see, it's the live edge. These things were cut off of our sawmill, those things that I'll give some tour with later. I'm, I'm really proud of them. They took it very seriously. They were giving me updates. They would come down, send me emails, say, what do you think about this? Just like they would in industry. And I think the, the proof is in the pudding right now that this is pretty awesome. And we're going to be able to use it for many years, for many different things. And I told them, you know, maybe one day after a few years, we'll retire it and have some kids make a new one and go from there. So I just kind of wanted to get that started on, and on the way out, if you can take a look, we'll, we'll go from there. And of course, we'll have pictures posted on the internet. So, all right, now I'm ready. So just like everything that happens in our district and at the school, we start with our strap plan. And one of the things that I look at the strategic plan, it makes me think of the late Reverend. And so it kind of tugs at my heartstrings a little bit. Coming back here, he was the first one to welcome me back when I was able to get voted in to be hired here. And so whenever I see it, I know it's what we do here for our kids and, and what we, leads everything that we do. But I also kind of think of him because of how important it was to him to, to, to have this. So I, I felt like I had to give a little shout out to him. Obviously, in the middle, all students will receive the care, support, and instruction needed to graduate from high school with plans for their most successful future. And some of the things that I'm going to talk about today just align right with that. And you can tell that this drives what we're doing. So the other thing was this RHS Vision for Student Learning. A few years back, the different divisions got together and created visions for their own division. And then those came together and then it was a RHS Vision for Student Learning. Kind of like I said last year, and I talk about this with staff too. This is our promise to our kids. This is what drives what we do for them. And I'll read it because I think it's important. And it says, RHS students experience a safe, equitable, and positive environment where students belong, take risks, collaborate, persevere, and engage in meaningful, relevant learning in order to meet their personal potential. Students are empowered, curious learners, effective problem solvers, and critical thinkers who achieve their goals, strive for excellence, celebrate success, and are prepared to contribute to their communities throughout their lives. Obviously, you can see the connection with the middle of the strap plan for that. It goes hand in hand. And once again, this is our promise to our students. Diving into data, we had three goals. One around literacy, literacy, one around math, and then also the path to graduation. This year, with our literacy goal, we scored a sixty point six on the Smarter Balance, which was an increase from forty one point one percent last year, so a nineteen percent increase on that. The math scores twenty two point seven was also an increase of about four percent. And then also, our path to graduation was at eighty four percent, where we did see a slight dip of about one percent. All of these three goals, I can tell you that this is something that's important to our staff. It's important to, the students don't know it's important to them sometimes, but it is because it's a reflection of, of what they're learning and them to be successful later on. With that little bit of a dip in our graduation, path to graduation, our ninth graders, team immediately got together once the data was released and said, okay, what can we do to be better? What are some things that we can do now? What are some things we can do in the middle of the year? And what are some things that we can do in the future to make sure that we don't have a dip and then also reach our goals? So I definitely think this is something that we take pretty important, right? We know it's not the end all be all, but it is something that we want to make sure that we examine and go forward. So our goals. We have a literacy goal, a math goal, and a path to graduation goal. Again, one of the things you're going to see here is an A and a B, and here is why. The first one is an increase in our Sback literacy score percentage by five percent. They did great, right? The kids did wonderful. They, they grew by almost twenty percent. I want to see, we want to see more growth. Keep going, right? But you notice that we also have a score here that we want to raise seven percent for our special education students or kids that are receiving services. Through a process of looking, some of our students who are receiving services are not progressing at the same rate as on some of these standardized tests as we would like, right? So we need to pay a little bit more attention, do some different things. So you'll see that the goals that they have there are a little larger. For math, we want to increase by seven percent this year. And then also, we want to make sure that our kids who are receiving services are at ten percent. And then with our ninth grade on track, we want that five percent because we want to be at ninety. That's where we want to be. And then once we're at ninety, I'll come back here and say we want to be at ninety five. So just know that it's going to continue, that we're going to shoot higher and higher and higher for these. One, you're going to see a common theme with these plan to meet these goals. There are if than statements. And I'm not going to read every single one to you, but the thing that I want to highlight, especially in that first one, is the if then statement where it's purpose, student engagement, assessment, and culture. Those are all things that we work on every day in our professional development. And our, our teachers are constantly trying to improve on this, and we're also trying to improve this, just as an overall system for Roseburg District, right? The other things that we're doing for these things is you'll see that the students to self-assess, students to take ownership of their learning. We can do a lot of things, but at the end of the day, we really want the students to take ownership in what they're doing because they're the ones that after high school, it's on them, right? So being able to take ownership of that and to continue to grow. And we need to make sure that we're giving them the skills, the practice, and the support to do that. Some of the things that we do is obviously professional development, map assessments, which I don't know if you're familiar with those. We had some training in that today. I'm super excited about it because we're able to see snap looks at our data from a literacy and math perspective, not just that eleventh grade year, but multiple times a year. And then also, some of our partners in middle school coming up, we're going to be able to see our kids through the process to know where we can dive in and help, watch their growth, and to get to where we need, not just a test on the eleventh grade and then go, well, I guess we should have done something different in ninth grade, right? So we want to make sure that, that we have all that and we're part of a training today. And I think it's going to be a great tool for us. Social, emotional learning connections, which we continue to do, our school-wide student success team, which is made up of administrators, counselors, other people, our grad coaches that get together. And we look at data to, to make sure that we're having the supports we need to make sure that the, the kids are growing in the areas that they need to. Once again, the next one with math is very much the same thing. The difference is, is we also do math studios, some teacher development work, T D G, which has been going on. I've had the opportunity to sit in last year and this year on that. This is great stuff. I've been able to observe some of our teachers in those moments to give even feedback for it, where it, it's good stuff. They take it seriously and they're working hard and kids will respond to it. Map assessments, once again, S E L connections, that's social, emotional learning. And then school-wide student success team also looks at the, this map. The path to graduation, the goal. This one is really a school-focused curriculum pedagogy assessment and culture, all the other things. This is part of the five D. I know that you've all heard about that before. I, I won't go completely into that, but it's centered around that. Once again, we're looking at the ninth grade, but this is a predictor to tenth, eleventh, and twelfth in graduation. Even though it's four years away, it's very important to make sure that we're having the success we need with the kids coming in. Obviously, we're doing our professional development. Our small learning communities, which are S L Cs, are a group of teachers that language arts, wellness, and science get together, sorry, and have the same group of kids, so they, they come together, look at data, have things that they do, and make sure that they're a part of the growth and, and success of these students. The social, emotional learning, the ninth grade success team is very much like the school-wide success teams. So it's just focused on ninth graders. The extended learning opportunities is some after-school help. We call it E L O, where students can come in and get help that with their grades. Last year, I believe it was like, kids that came in to E L O were at a forty percent higher rate to raise their grades by just getting those supports and the teachers that are in there and the grad coaches that are helping with them is, is pretty exciting. Good work going on. Thank you. I feel like I talked really fast. Sorry. Any questions?
I just want to comment on the E L O. That, that sounds very, very exciting. And I was also very happy to see that you have specific goal for your special education students. You know, that was, that was good. Good idea.
Also, the fact that you really outlined your, your steps to achieve those goals, that's helpful because a lot of times, you know, the, the goals are there and they're good and, and something we all want to strive for, but seems like you've really spent some time here to, to tell us how you really plan to get there. And so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just have to say, wow, on the podium. I'm like, this is really cool. I, we just needed, thank these students again. That's awesome. Thank you so much, Mr. Victory, Vickery. Appreciate it. And now we have some more outstanding students. We have Anand Kolberg and Sylvia Ekman, who are going to be giving us the student leadership report. Take it away, girls.
All right. To begin, we are starting with leadership. We've been lucky to spend time in the middle school leadership programs this past month. It's wonderful to share about our programs. If you can't tell, we love talking about leadership. Getting into their classes and learning more about what middle school leaders are up to is also very exciting. We opened our second cycle of club grants on February third. Student leaders of clubs have the opportunity to apply for funding for community improvement projects during the entire month of February. We'll be giving up to seven thousand five hundred dollars to these programs. New to our leadership program and campus, students have the opportunity to ask Mr. Vickery anything during lunches once a month, thanks to an initiative organized by our junior class representative, Ryan Wilson. The art assembly is right around the corner. We are working with some of the most talented students on our campus to put this together. From our band, choir, and drama programs to wrestling and swim teams, we look forward to showcasing many RHS outstanding students. Pride shout-outs are back in full swing. Students can share a positive note with staff or students. The leadership class then passes them out during classes. Students this week also have the opportunity to buy valentines through the leadership class, which we will also hand out. And for sports, basketball is in full swing. Most weeks, our teams play two or more games and are preparing for their postseason. Last week, the girls' team played at Grants Pass at home and are headed to Eugene to play Willamette on Friday. In addition, our boys' team played Grants Pass and Willamette as well this last week. Swim is also doing very well. Last week, Swim had a duel with Willamette at home and won. They are preparing for districts, which are this Friday. Lacrosse has begun their preseason workouts a few days a week. Practices begin March third, and their first game will be March nineteenth against Newburgh at home.
We have to trade because we're talking about track and I love to talk about running, but winter track has begun preseason workouts. Anyone on campus can run, throw, or jump with many of the track coaches after school on Tuesdays. Looking at our cheer team, it's really impressive. They're one of the only teams that practice year-round around on campus. And they placed first place in a competition here at RHS early this month and also placed fourth in a national competition. Oh, my goodness. And then our unified basketball team is actually warming up as we speak. I think it's a good segue. Had a board meeting to unify basketball. Good night. And they're playing Douglas tonight. Looking at clubs and different stuff happening on school. Our F B L A chapter, or Future Business Leaders of America, attended regionals this January, and many students competed and qualified for the state competitions. We want to say congrats to the thirty-plus students who are heading to the state competition in Portland this April. This venture is one of the things that was funded partially by club grants, so we're really proud of that. Set building and rehearsals for Bonomiya are in full swing. The play opens on February twenty eighth. Pretty excited for that. Our F F A chapter is making a statewide impact. Olivia Miller was elected to be the F F A district secretary, and Sylvia Smith is running for a district officer or state officer position. This nineteenth, we're hosting RHS Pride Night to introduce incoming freshmen to all the opportunities on campus. There will be most, if not all, of the clubs present and helping with the event. Clubs will have tables with games and papers explaining what their club focuses on. This event also introduces freshmen to many of the elective classes that RHS offers. Maybe you can learn a little more about podium building. I think that'd be pretty good, or do some sketching in the art classes. And then in Mr. Corey Merrill's AP Human Geography class, which we're in, we're pretty excited about, students are hosting a school-wide donation process to collect school supplies for an orphanage in Zimbabwe. Students have already raised over a thousand dollars for the, for the orphanage through a bake sale. Donations are going to be collected through March seventeenth. And then this Friday, our choir programs are doing singing valentines on campus and in the community. We hope you guys get the opportunity to hear some of our wonderful peers. I think that's it, but especially this week. We love you all, and we're super grateful to be speaking with you. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, girls. It's always great. It, I am still so amazed at all that you do and keeping up your grades, headed towards your future, and yet doing a lot of the extra stuff with leadership. It's very exciting. Very proud of you. Very proud of you. And next, we have more student recognition. We have Director Michael Leoni, who is going to present our student recognition. Is your mic on? Your mic?
Can you hear me now? Okay. Well, anyway, hey, we're going to announce, there's five outstanding students that we're, we're going to award these, these certificates and I think there's something else too, but I won't say. But if you could stay afterwards, so after we've done all this, have everybody stay because we're going to take pictures with, with the board. So stick around for that. Anyway, so we have five outstanding students, and we're going to start with somebody from Fullerton Elementary, the Grayson Lyon, fifth grade. Why don't you come on up? All right. Over there, I'm going to grab your award. Hey. That'd be great. Okay, Grayson is a dedicated, hard worker. His effort in school, completing his work without fail, and his kindness to others has not gone unnoticed at Fullerton. Is so, and Fullerton is so proud of his achievements. Whether it's his willingness to help others, his dedication to completing tasks, or the way he contributes to the classroom environment, Grayson has made a lasting impact at Fullerton. Grayson should be Grayson, Grayson, to be extremely proud of everything he's accomplished and should know that his efforts are appreciated. Fullerton staff look forward to seeing Grayson continue to shine in the future. His attitude and commitment are what make Grayson so special. Congratulations. All right. Okay. Now, from Fremont Middle School, we have Emmy Soder, sixth grade. Is it Emmy or Amy? Emmy. Okay, Emmy is exceptional in every way. Her kindness to her, her high performance in academics, honesty and integrity, hard-working attitude, and her student leadership, just to name a few, are all the reasons why she has been chosen for this honor. Emmy's dedication to her academics is unwavering. She consistently performs at the highest level, demonstrating a thorough understanding of the material and a passion for learning. In the classroom, she does an excellent job of leading student discussions and helping her groups stay focused on the task. She is also a, has a gentle way of successfully including and encouraging reluctant learners be a part of the conversation. Beyond her academic performance, Emmy's character is truly remarkable. She consistently demonstrates kindness, empathy towards others, always willing to leave a helping hand to her classmates. Her ability to connect with others and create a positive environment in the classroom makes her a role model for her peers and a great addition for Fremont. Congratulations. All right. I think we've got some high school people here. From Roseburg High School, Joshua Lander, twelfth grade. Come on up, everyone. Don't be shy. All right. What a group. All right. Okay, Josh is a hard-working and inquisitive student. He consistently brings a positive attitude to class and treats his peers with respect. His playful spirit is evident in the daily thumb wars he enjoys with friends. Is that the thing you do this? Oh, my goodness. Okay. And it's a fun ritual that energizes them for the day's lessons. He is also collaborative, open-minded, and task-oriented with his peers. In A P and C C Literature, the most challenging English course on campus, Josh perseveres by studying diligently, submitting assignments on time, engaging deeply with complex literature. He balances a rigorous schedule of A P and dual-credit classes while playing lacrosse, participating in church, and family activities, and working two jobs. Wow. Okay. As captain of the J V Lacoste team and a member of the National Honor Society, Josh amplifies leadership, kindness, and dedication. His strong work ethic and bright future make him well-deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Joshua. Okay, from, oh yeah, stay up here. This is for Zachary Williams. Here. All right. Zack is an exemplary student, athlete, whose strong work ethic, determination, and positive attitude sets him apart. Always punctual, punctual, and prepared, Zack excels in both academics, extracurricular activities, and, and extracurricular activities. In class, he is engaged, respectful, and consistently goes above and beyond expectations, as seen in his dedication to honors biology and his decision to take the A P Biology exam. Teachers admire his intelligence, sense of humor, and willingness to support peers in their learning. Outside of classrooms, Zack is a valuable member of the varsity's boys' golf team and actively participates in school spirit activities like the Bum Squad. Okay, he balances academics and extracurricular seamlessly, demonstrating reliability, kindness, and leadership. His energy and enthusiasm inspire those around him, making him a joy to teach and a role model for his peers. Zachary truly embodies the qualities of a hard-working and well-rounded individual deserving of the recognition for his achievements. Congratulations. Okay, last but not least, from Roseburg, tenth grade, it's Sage Palomares. Hey, Sage is an incredible inspiration to all his classes, consistently leading by example in discussions and demonstrating a great work ethic. Fearless in his learning, he isn't afraid to make mistakes and use them as opportunities to grow. Sage's genuine care for his peers, teachers, and staff at RHS fosters a positive, inclusive environment. His impeccable attendance reflects not only his dedication, but his presence in every sense. Engaged, supportive, and uplifting. His respectful, polite demeanor shines through in every interaction, and he's always quick to offer help when needed. As active members of R H A Young Life, Football, and Year-Round Staff, or Yearbook Staff, sorry, Sage embodies RHS pride through his kindness, encouragement, and involvement. In photography and design too, his creativity and constructive feedback elevates, elevate his peers' work. Sage positivity and dedication make him a true joy to have at RHS.
We're going to go ahead and do the teachers, and then we'll all conduct. Okay. That's why you guys. Okay, I'm on. Okay, great. So the first golden apple going to honor is Pete Hanson. I can tell you guys are excited. This is awesome. Pete is an integ, he is a math teacher, by the way. He is an integral part of the RHS community, embodying the spirit, enthusiasm, and dedication that define an exceptional educator. Since joining RHS in 2011, Pete has made a profound impact both inside and outside the classroom, earning him the well-deserved title of "The Voice of RHS." With over 30 years of teaching experience, Pete's ability to connect with students across all levels of math is nothing short of remarkable. Pete's contributions to the math department are extensive. He has taught various courses while also piloting and developing CTE and Trades Math Options. His leadership extends beyond academics, supporting efforts to promote positive student behavior. Pete also advises the RC Club, bringing together a diverse group of students to share in their passion for remote-controlled vehicles. He frequently assists students during lunch and prep periods, chaperones dances, and announces the homecoming court during football games. His energy, kindness, and wit make him a beloved figure among both students and staff. And his crystal apple says, "Attend today, achieve tomorrow." Congratulations, Pete. Thank you. Don't go anywhere. Okay, we have now Kumbalani Moyo. Did I say it right? Kumbalani is an instructional assistant. He is an exceptional instructional assistant at Roseburg High School and a vital member of the school's specialized resource classroom, the SRC program. Kumbalani first joined RHS as a substitute and quickly discovered his passion for working with students and collaborating with the teaching staff. His ability to connect with students and contribute meaningfully to their education made him a natural fit for a permanent role within the SRC program. From the beginning, his enthusiasm, patience, and kindness set him apart, making a lasting impact on both students and colleagues. His patience, creativity, and deep respect for each individual create an inclusive and encouraging environment where students feel valued and empowered to reach their full potential. His dedication to student growth and well-being makes him not only an incredible educator, but also a role model for both students and staff. His crystal apple reads, "Excellence, dedication, and inspiration. Thank you for making a difference." Congratulations, Kumbal. Okay, now we are going to move into Fullerton Four Elementary School. Hannah Harwood, an instructional assistant in the Learning Resource Center. Yes, Hannah, this is awesome. The more the merrier. There's plenty of room over here. Just spread out. Hannah has made many outstanding contributions to Fullerton Four. Her dedication, hard work, and a commitment to excellence have truly stood out and deserve to be recognized. Over the past years, Hannah has demonstrated exceptional skills by helping some of the school's more-at-risk students grow and develop into great students. Her ability to reach all students with their specific needs has not only contributed to their success, but inspires her colleagues to be better. The entire Fullerton staff appreciates everything she does. Hannah is a valued member of the team, and they are grateful for her continued efforts and dedication. And her crystal apple reads, "Your passion, positivity, and consistency fuel our success." Congratulations, Hannah. We have your Fullerton Four teachers and staff. You may want to stay up here. Our next crystal apple winner is Carrie Stokes Redcell. Carrie is a third-grade teacher at Fullerton Four. Her outstanding contributions and dedication to the Fullerton community, along with her commitment to excellence, have not gone unnoticed. Her caring, problem-solving skills, teamwork, dedication, and love for her students have played a crucial role in the success of the third-grade team. Carrie's positive attitude and unwavering determination have set a great example for her colleagues, and her work has had a significant impact on the overall success of the school. According to Principal Russell, Carrie's professionalism and hard work are invaluable, even though she is a Steelers fan. Her crystal, her crystal apple reads, "Thank you for making a remarkable impact." Congratulations, Carrie. May, we'd like all the recipients, the students and the crystal apple winners, if you would all come forward so that we could have a photograph with the Board of Directors, please. Come on up. Yep, you can bring your own one. We will be taking a short break, so that you're welcome to leave if you don't want to stay for the business portion. However, I would encourage you to stay if you're able to, especially to hear the superintendent's report. I think there's a lot of questions that he might be able to answer for you. So we'll take a few minutes of a break and then we'll come back. Thank you. They're out like that. Yeah, I will, I will call this meeting back to order. So, thank you for your patience. Do we have anyone that would like to speak to the board during? Okay. Is there anybody online? We have, we have no public participation this evening. Okay. So I really thank you for staying. And at this point, Superintendent Corden will give the review of the agenda and communications to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, thank you, RHS staff. Always great to be here. You've taken great care of my kids and our family, and it's always good to kind of be back home with you. Thanks for putting everything together. It's great to see the great work you're doing with kids. Also, just want to, so first of all, in terms of review of the agenda, there have been no updates since the last publication. So no last minute items. In terms of communications, I want to thank Director Hammersen, who's joining us online. He's actually out of the state in a different time zone, and his commitment, he's here tonight. And so thank you, Steve, for being with us here on Zoom. We see you, waving at you. Also want to, I appreciate the student report. Unified basketball is happening right now, and also let you know, if we're efficient tonight, that after Unified Basketball, our RHS chair is holding a community showcase in preparation for the state event right after Unified Basketball, probably about 7:15, so no pressure for us to be efficient, but that we may want to make tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's in the gymnasium here? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we're into action item number one, the Consent Agenda. It's pages one through 50. In your packet, items in there were minutes from the January 23 Building and Sites Committee meeting, notices of retirements, resignations, and surplus items and gifts to the district. I would like to extend our appreciation particularly to our donors, including Gordon Avery, Field of Dreams Bull Riding, Foley Roofing, and Jolene PSA and Keller Lumber for their generosity in supporting our schools and students. I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I so move.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Agree? Oh, we've got Mr. Hammersen, yes. And none opposed, so motion carries. At this time, I would like to introduce and acknowledge Hugh Crest Elementary Teacher Emily Lazar, recipient of Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. And Jared, would you?
Yeah. Thank you for being here. So tonight, and I feel like I should be facing everybody tonight, but I want to take a moment just to recognize Emily. First of all, I want to thank a couple of folks that put this incredible, I want to present you with this. RHS Inspired and Developed Award for you tonight, and I'll talk about this award here in just a minute. I want to thank Grace Bachmeyer, who helped develop that and put that together. Why don't you give me this real quick? I'm going to hold it just so I can read it exactly here. But you all give it back to you, I promise, Emily. But Emily was recently awarded with the, she is the recipient of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, which is the nation's highest honor for educating in science, technology, engineering, and math, or STEM education. She is not only an outstanding educator with our students at Hugh Crest, but is an example of exemplary teaching across the country. And I just want to give her a huge shout-out, round of applause for all her work in supporting our kids. Okay, there we go. And let me just say this real quick. As we talk about building career pathways and the making sure we're providing kids with a relevant education, and we're going to talk tonight on the agenda, there's some board actions, votes around some additional investments in that. Sometimes we think and we talk about career pathways kind of starting in high school. When the reality of this is in the system we're creating, it starts well beyond that, or well before that. It's way upstream. And Emily is a great example of this fantastic work happening around in those formative years where kids are developing kind of their curiosity, their excitement about that, their identity as an engineer, as a mathematician, those formative years are so important. And so thank you for being an example of helping us create a pathway that's connected for kids and communities. So thank you, Emily. Yeah. She's asking if she can take the podium, but Emily, let's grab a picture real quick. Okay, next, Mickey Hall. Mickey, hey, how are you? Come on up, Mickey. Yeah, you can. All right, it's good to see you again, Mickey. Come on up here. Join me up here. We're really appreciative. Mickey has deep, deep roots and connections to our school district. As an educator and an advocate, a former board member. And tonight's agenda item is to swear you in. I'll serve as the clerk here to swear you in as a budget committee member for our Roseburg schools. So Mickey, you would raise your right arm to the square and repeat after me. It's also written down here in case I go too fast. There you go. I, Mickey Hall. This feels better. I need to swear you in. Follow procedure. All right, I, Mickey Hall.
I, Mickey Hall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of Roseburg Public Schools.
Policies of Roseburg Public Schools.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Of the office to the best of my ability.
The best of my abilities.
Thank you. By the authority vested in me as the clerk of Douglas County School District Number Four, I hereby declare you duly sworn, duly elected, and eligible to serve as a member of the Roseburg Public Schools Board of Education's Budget Committee. Thank you and congratulations.
I don't have to say it here, but I was on the board, and I want to thank you. And I'm going to actually pretend like everybody in the community agrees with me. I know what it takes to be a board member. I know what it takes to be an administrator, and I appreciate all of you, and I hope the rest of the community does.
Thank you. That was very kind, and I did want to thank you for volunteering your time and your expertise on the Budget Committee, Mickey. Thank you. We are going to move into item number four, which is Resolution 242511. It's Classified Employee Application, excuse me, Appreciation Week, March 3rd through 7th of 2025. Classified School Employee Week is celebrated every year during the first full week of March. Classified school employees go above and beyond for Oregon schools every day. They keep Oregon students healthy, nourished, and learning, no matter what. While their work is often unrecognized, these dedicated servants do important jobs that are essential to our schools. This Classified School Employees Week, we would like to share our heartfelt gratitude with all of our hard-working classified staff members. These individuals work in areas such as libraries, maintenance, school and district offices, security personnel, warehouse, and purchasing, computer and technicals, custodial, educational support in classrooms, lunchrooms and playgrounds, and food service, and a social component of every student's school day. The Board of Directors know that each and every one of you make a difference today and every day in the lives of our children. Thank you for all that you do. I would entertain a motion to I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 242511 as presented. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Great. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. And Mr. Hammerson is, yes, as well. Motion carries.
Do we have a representative of the board to stand up and be recognized or get a copy of the resolution?
We do not have, that I'm aware of. I do have a copy of the resolution. Yeah, we will make sure that it gets to them. Thank you. And now we are moving into item number five. We have a number of actions to do for personnel. Our first one is it's in your, your packet, ORS 342-513, pages 52 to 56. Assistant Superintendent and Human Resources Director Michelle Nie has provided you with her annual memo and accompanying ORS language pertaining to our annual personnel actions. So the first one we have is the probationary administrator contract renewals. We have a number of probationary administrators recommended for serving first year to second year, second year to third year and third year to contract in our district. And each, each contract is listed for review. Right now, I would entertain a motion to approve probationary administrator contract renewals as proposed.
I so moved in seconds.
Great. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussions? Great. All in favor? Okay, all right. Motion carries unanimous. The next one we have is Contract Administrator Extensions, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th of 2028. In accordance with Oregon statute, the board acts to renew or not renew three-year contracts for each of our administrators who are in the second year of their third-year contract. Such renewals must be made and notice provided by March 15th of year two. These will be considered for a three-year extension in March 2026. I would entertain a motion to approve administrator contract extensions as proposed.
So moved.
Second.
Great. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Great. None are opposed. Motion carries. It's unanimous. We now move to probationary teacher renewals, which is page 59 through 62. The board is asked to renew teachers serving as either first year P1, second year P2, or third year P3 probationary professionals. With board approval, the P3 teachers advance this year to contract status beginning in 2025 through 26 and will no longer be considered probationary teachers. I would entertain a motion to approve probationary teachers as proposed. First year to second year, second year to third year, third year to contract, second year to contract. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Right. All, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, great. It's unanimous. Motion carries. Now we have the two-year teacher contract extensions, 2025 through 2026 and 2026 through 2027. Pages 63 through 66 in your packet. In accordance with Oregon law, the board acts to award two-year contracts to our non-probationary teachers by the statutory March 15th notification date. Teachers showing deficiencies and placed on a program of assistance for improvement and notice of non-extension are also required to receive contract status notification by the March 15th date. Through this action, the board is authorizing the issues of such notification and two-year contracts beginning July 1st, 2025 and ending on June 30th, 2027 to all teachers on the enclosed list. I would entertain a motion to approve. Two-year, let me read the motion. Okay. Two-year teacher contract. We had to make it official. Two-year contract extensions as proposed, first year to second year, second year to third year, third year to contract, second year to contract. We do have a motion. Thank you, Director Cotton. We do have a second. Wow. We're, we're really rolling on this. Any discussion? Great. All those in favor? Great. It's unanimous. Motion carries. And then the last one that we have is expiration of temporary contracts expiring the end of 2024 through 2025 school year. This is on page 67 of your packet. Temporary teachers whose, this is temporary teachers whose contract will expire without renewal as per our employment agreement with them. This is not punitive in any manner but is standard procedure. These teachers who have completed such a temporary contract are eligible to pursue a regular teacher contract in the future. The teachers listed are advised that they may apply for regular positions as they become available and for which they must be qualified. I would entertain a motion to approve the expiration of temporary contracts at the end of 2024 to 2025 school year as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Do we have any discussion? Those in favor? Okay, great. Unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you so much for doing this. It's something we need to do every year. So thank you. The next item on the agenda is a consideration for a Roseburg High School wing of UCC's Medical Careers Hub and Welcome Center. I will give you a little information for those who are here and who are online. At our January 22nd board meeting and work session, Umpqua Community College President Dr. Rachel Porgram presented an overview of an upcoming capital project at UCC and an invitation for RPS to partner with UCC in the construction of a Roseburg High School wing at UCC's Medical Centers Hub and Welcome Center. You also have Superintendent Corden's synopsis of the opportunity to invest in dedicated space for Roseburg High School students at Umpqua Community College's Medical Centers Hub and Welcome Center. And he had just outlined a few things, why this opportunity matters, how recent developments and potential federal education spending models impact this project, how it fits with our current facilities needs, other options for improving access to medical career pathways for our students, other potential costs, and what an agreement with UCC could look like. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve up to 2.5 million for the construction of a Roseburg Public Schools Advanced Medical Pathways Facility connected to the Umpqua Community College Welcome Center and Medical Careers Hub pending mutually agreed upon legal review and an MOU agreement between RPS and UCC boards. I do want for those maybe who are watching in the community who are not familiar with what an MOU is, it's a memorandum of understanding. So I would entertain this motion. Do I?
I would. So moved.
Great. Do we have a second?
A second.
Please, oh, okay. Director Hammerson is the second. So we, we have a motion. We have a second. I would open the floor for discussion.
Discussion. I'm interested. We are doing the appropriation, but this is a multi-year construction project. And so how are we going to distribute the funds as this project proceeds?
So pending obviously board approval on this and, and as the motion said, a joint agreement. We operate in a system of services rendered, rendered. It's likely to be about a two-year project. And so the distribution of funds will likely happen over a multi-year period is per our practice of paying for services as they're rendered.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or?
First of all, I think this is a fantastic opportunity. It's a great idea. It's it's the kind of thing that doesn't usually happen in smaller communities, Roseburg, you know, so it's, it's a great thing. It's a great pathway and it's exciting. And with all that said, I have a giant butt in this. We've ran several bonds that haven't passed. And the number one issue on those that we all discussed was HVAC, air conditioning in the buildings. We did a survey this past year with students and teachers and we asked them, what's the number one thing that you guys would like? If we could fix something tomorrow, what would be? And it was you, a very resounding HVAC. Please give us air conditioning. In my mind, I personally don't think it's wise or responsible to spend $2.5 million when we still have these outstanding needs that I think are immediate. In my mind, we, we've priced this out. It's $25 million. And in my mind, we, we, we pick the one-tenth of the schools that are the worst right now and we take this $2.5 million and we give them air conditioning. We work on the most significant problems that we have in our district with the funds that we have. Like I said, this is a wonderful program and I think it will benefit us greatly in the future. I would just like to state my personal thoughts on the subject about responsibly spending the funds that we do have. And I'm concerned about budget funding going forward with the new PERS upgrades. And I'm just a very fiscally conservative person that does not like to spend money in an uncertain area. When we, yeah, that's, that's all I have to say on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Shirkleff. Any other discussion?
Discussion. I, I feel this is a really good idea too. And I share Board Member Shirkleff's concern. That's why I ask how the money would be distributed. But I also, I agree with you. There are some fundamental needs that we need to address. But the other thing I think we learned from the surveys and in the work that we're starting to finish on the facilities plans is that we need to do things differently in this district. That we maybe don't need to go out and ask for bond measures. We need to operate within funding that we have and use things, take advantages of special opportunities where there's a sharing and, and an improvement. Also high on that list was career technical education. That was one of the high-rated services that we got from our process, from our survey process. This is that. And it, I, I had a trouble weighing this also. But that, the doing things differently and that this is career technical education that will benefit us for years and years in advance, our whole community. I was persuaded to vote favorably on this motion.
Thank you. I also shared concerns, but I came to the conclusion that we are always going to be in need. There will always be something that is urgent now. Very seldom do you get an opportunity to partner with someone that will give extraordinary payoff and fits with our strategic plan for a relatively low cost. And we need to, yes, we always need to take care of what is urgent now, what is needed now, but we also need to invest in our future. And I think that this is a low cost and a, a great way to do that. Maybe the timing isn't perfect, but you, this is like a once in a lifetime thing. So the other, actually, couple of questions that I have is you know, if, I, I think it is low risk in my understanding and that if years down the road, we maybe don't want to partner in this for whatever reason, maybe we build our whole, our own medical facility or whatever, that it, it most likely would be able to be purchased back by the college. So we're not going to be stuck with something that, you know, we're not going to be able to use. But then the, the other question that I have is I know it's early in the game because we've not voted on this, but there, do you think that there would be community support from other places, maybe being excited about joining in some way or another with this?
Yeah, there's some. The last meeting we had, board meeting where Dr. Porgram came, generated some interest in the community. And I've had a chance to meet over the last week or two with some interested parties that are interested in a partnership to speed this work up. I our medical community is acutely aware of the need for employees. They're also acutely aware of this partnership. And I believe there'll be high interest in supporting this. Talked to a couple of potential supporters who have already expressed interest, of course, pending this discussion tonight with the board and supporting the work going forward.
Thank you. Do we have other discussion?
I'm not going to add a whole lot that I didn't add at the work session, but I do share Andrew's concerns and I appreciate you doing that. I've always been a solid S from the start. And the, the main reason is we were told through the three bonds that we ran that did not pass, that we needed to do something different. You need to do something different. So we did. I, I can't remember how many millions of dollars that we've used, but between Esser and Seism Grant, it's probably pushing $20 million. I'm assuming more than that. How much? 20?
25 in the last five years.
So 25 million in the last five years. So we've done something different. This building that we're going to own, I don't know, it's 5,000, 6,000 square feet maybe, kind of knocking around. For 2.5, no more than 2.5 million or up to 2.5 million. Kind of takes the sting off not having a new building sitting where the old man is. And who knows, we may, you know, our hope is that we will get a bond passed and that we will be able to get air conditioning in all of our buildings. We do, we are putting air conditioning out, putting two buildings that we got a grant for and a matching grant. It's going to cost us some money. What, I don't know how, a couple million dollars maybe.
Yeah, the grant was 650,000, I think, or 606, yeah, times two. So that's for both Eastwood and Jolene.
So, so we are doing that, but I, I was supportive of that because the community told us that we needed to do something different. And we've done that. We've secured our schools to the best of our abilities. And I, I think it's, I think it's, you know, we'll be, I think, the only high school in Oregon that will have something like this. And there's just a handful across the country. And I think about the, the tuition that we're saving our kids. That's a big thing to me and maybe we can keep our kids local. And so I hope when the time for the vote comes that we'll have a positive vote.
You, Director Cotton. Director Hammerson, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Yeah, I'm, I'm speaking in favor of the motion. I mean, one of the reasons that I'm in Baltimore, Maryland right now is because I can't find and accept a level of care for a family member in the state of Oregon. I, I, I think Roseburg is a microcosm of the state. We're lacking skilled medical professionals in the state of Oregon. If we have an opportunity to be a beacon of hope of bringing skilled medical professionals to the state of Oregon, we should be jumping all over that. I'm, I'm all with Andrew. I understand, you know, the financial constraints. But I mean, th- this is something that transcends even our school district. It, it's, it's something that you know, we, we really can save and help better lives by doing this program. I have a brother-in-law that went to high school in the Gresham area, went through a charter school thing with this and, and Jared and Rod, you're both right. No high school, no school districts are doing this, but there are programs like this and they are wildly successful. So you know, I, we may take some lumps on, in terms of going, did we choose this over that? I, I think four, five, 10 years down the line, we're going to look back at this and go, wow. You know, we, we set the example and, and raise the level, raise the standards of what medical care looks like in our area and greater. So yeah, I'm just speaking in favor.
Thank you, Director Hammerson. Um, do we have other discussion?
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm uh in favor of this uh for a couple of reasons. The first reason is um, you know, my daughter is a a nurse. Uh, and it cost us a lot of money to get her through college. And this program, and it really strapped us down you know, financially. And just the, you know, the opportunity for for young people to go through this whole program possibly debt-free uh is, would be amazing. Why didn't we, why didn't you do this earlier? Could have bought that new truck. But you know, it's the the bottom line is from a, from a family standpoint, it's really a a positive thing. Also, um it's it's the visibility of this to our community, uh, and hopefully we we let everybody know uh at a national level what we're doing, because we could be, we we could be starting something, not just here in in Roseburg, but you know, throughout the country. So we could be a model for that. And in the process, that would probably bring a lot of people out here to see what we're doing. And so I think from a visibility standpoint, um, it would be huge.
Thank you, Director Leonie. Um, uh, Director Krimmets?
Yes, I, this is something that I really grappled with. I was pretty strongly a no, um, because I'm Scottish and I'm tight and and just not seeing for sure the money that we had to do it. Um, but I uh, it's it's taken me some time, but I have, there's a few things that has really swayed me to be more positive about this. And one is that it is a very low cost to build uh this annex to what they are already doing. And so it's a deal. So that's part of Scottish is you go for the deal. It is, and even I ran this by my husband and he's a, he does all the finances in our family and he's the budget guy. And and I just basically outlined it a little bit to him and he said, that's a no-brainer. Yes, you should do it. And he was able to just describe to me what uh, the cost effectiveness of this particular project is a a very once in a lifetime. Like you said, an opportunity. So then I started thinking about, okay, what will we do with the building for sure when we get it? Is it um, is it the money that we're paying? Is it worthwhile for what we're getting for it? And um as we, you know, we were looking at the auxiliary sort of career paths that we are going to provide for our kids. They may not go fully into the nursing or being a doctor, but they, all those auxiliary positions of radiology, the phlebotomy, the the um the the aides, the medical aides, um, all of those, we need those so desperately. And those, we have kids that could easily move into those in our graduation, ninth grade on track graduation rate. If we start, if we have programs like this that we could paint that for them, I think we're gonna get our graduation rates up. I think that there are kids that normally could not see a picture for themselves, but these are gonna be good paying jobs and we can almost promise them a position when they, when they get done with the certification. So those things, and then even today, we went on our tour uh to the, what we already have currently. And I was just amazed at what we do have and how much more we could get, how many more students we could service. And I was impressed with the staff members that showed us what they do um with the equipment they had. So I was like, yeah, this is the right move for us at this point. So we, and we do have some cushioning in our budget that we can use that I think will help us. So I mean, I'm positive on this one.
Thank you, Director Krimmets. Do we have any other discussion? So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, let the record show that Director Shirtcliffe is in opposition. Otherwise, all are in favor. Otherwise, and motion carries. Thank you for your candid comments. I appreciate it. Um, we have agenda item number seven, Douglas ESD twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six local service plan. This is the the resolution pages sixty-eight through seventy-four in your packet. So you've received the twenty-five, twenty-six local service plan designed to serve thirteen school districts within Douglas County. Leaders from the boards of both the Douglas ESD and RPS have met to review expectations and design of the local service plan going forward. Superintendent Corden and Annalicia Nicholson from ESD have been meeting to come to a mutually understood plan for the future LSPs. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the Douglas ESD local service plan for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as presented. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six local service plan for ESD.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Saying.
Great. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Uh, motion carries. Uh, we're moving into committee reports. I would let you know that the minutes for these uh meetings, curriculum and instruction and building insights is included in your packet. But at this time, we will have Director Krimmets share a synopsis of the meeting for curriculum and instruction.
Uh, yes, we had our meeting January fifteenth and um the main things we were discussing were new course offerings coming up at RHS for the next school year twenty-five, twenty-six. And to also receive updates on our ongoing ELA and health curriculum adoptions. And uh lots of teachers um responded that they really were interested in piloting these programs. So um, we're just getting ready to begin those piloting of those uh curriculums. Um, also, the the new courses uh coming to RHS were really, really exciting. Some of them came about by legislation, new legislation, which sometimes we're a little nervous about new legislation that dictates some things for us, but this was SB three that was enacted that um was a good one because it is a financial literacy class and college and career education classes, um, which really fit with our strategic plan. So these are things that we do think kids need to know, all kids need to know to, for their most successful futures. So we are excited that we are gonna be adopting those courses and I think the kids will benefit greatly. How many of us wish we knew a little bit more about just finances in life before we graduated? And it was kind of a rude awakening when you got out into the real world. So um also new math courses uh for AP classes, uh AP statistics and contemporary math is uh one that will cover a lot of students that may be not at the AP level, but and the more general math, and that's gonna take them just where they need to get. So we're looking forward to that. Also, additional offerings will include general psychology. And um that's gonna be a popular one. Uh, everybody likes to know a little bit more about that. And uh also unified theater. We're gonna have some very good new classes for fine arts that will incorporate all aspects in theater that will give a lot of kids an opportunity in that fine arts area that they wouldn't normally maybe venture into. So we're, we're looking forward to those.
You, Director Krimmets, and now we have Building and Sites Chair, Director Rodney Cotton.
So you all received the minutes. So I'm just gonna hit a couple highlights. Um, we did our tour today for the high school foyer, the issues that were brought up and a suggestion to make that area safer and a little bit more larger. And um uh, we all liked the suggestion and and I think superintendent is going to work on funding on that and maybe try to get that in for this next school year. The meeting was held on the twenty-third um and it was, it was, it was a very good meeting. The the thing that came out of it is um, we still have a few issues about uh security and lacks of security at times. So in an effort to ensure the safety of our students, staff, uh, employees will be directed to ensure school facilities remain locked in the mornings until staff members arrive, who can open gates or doors while providing continuous supervision. When schools start for the day, access points will be locked and will remain locked throughout the day. So that's, that was a pretty easy fix. The big thing that came out of it, besides the foyer, was uh to make the process easier for staff in the community and to limit nighttime access to campuses on the weekends, electric locks will be installed at single access points or playgrounds and fields at our schools. These electric locks will be timed to lock every day during the hours between dusk and dawn, and this includes the weekends. As a required safety measure, pushbars will be installed on the internal gates to prevent people from being locked inside. The district will communicate these changes to community members. So what this means, our our playgrounds will be available for the communities around those schools um on the weekends. And and but they'll be, they'll be locked in one way in, and then we'll be able to control somehow these locks on the the time, timing of the locks. I don't know if we've got any of those installed yet, but um that's coming because that's been a bone of contention. Some folks wanted to be able to get into, especially elementary area. And uh, I think this is a win-win. And we'll see what happens. You know, if we have lots of vandalism, then we'll have to revisit. We'll do that on an individual basis.
You, Director Cotton. Um, now Jared, would you please share your superintendent's report?
Would love to. And again, just following up on um Director Cotton's um comments, there um most, nearly all the issues we've had in terms of vandalism, theft, and what I'll call salacious activity has happened when it's dark outside. And so um, this, I think, provides access. It's a good balance between access and also ensuring that when we get here in the morning and staff get here in the morning, we're not looking for hypodermic needles or people that might be sleeping on our campuses, or what that might be. So I think that's a good win-win. All right, I've got a short report. I always say a short report. We'll see how short this one is tonight. Uh, I love to start with our staff and our kids. We've got amazing people working with our staff. You heard about some of these tonight. I've got amazing kids, and I want to talk just real quickly about a couple of things tonight. Before I talk about some of the kind of accolades of our students, I just want you to take a look at this picture. I think I zoom in here. Sometimes when you share, you can't zoom in, but just want to take, if you get a chance, look at the faces of these children. And so it's, this is, sometimes can be talked about instructionally what's happening. So the picture on the left, there were about twenty teams in the Southern Oregon Robotics League that participated in the competition. RHS teams, our Leo and Scorpio team took first place. And and the alliance matches over the weekend, right? So it's like, that's a great thing about all the great instruction happening, how connected kids are. But what I really want to point out is our expectation around care, support, instruction is really evident in the, in the faces of these kids. There are great support from their staff and they're cared for by uh the the teachers here, and they're taking good care of each other. On the right-hand side, Sylvia talked about this tonight, FBLA, our Future Business Leaders of America. They were also at the, at the Oregon Regional Conference um that was held just up the road from Crestwell. And we've got, I think the number is like thirty of our kids that qualified for state, our, our, our FBLA, um, Steve Patterson, and that group completely crushed it again. It's one of a hundred examples I can give you about how our kids are doing. When you ask the question of like, and how were the children, the children are kicking butt. The children are doing great. And so in many ways, kids are doing great. Give you a couple of examples. Um, jumped down to elementary school with Eastwood. Here's a picture on the left. You can kind of see through the hoodie. I love it. Just getting excited here. What are they doing? They're at Domino's in Winston, actually. And they're, they're actually applying mathematics using pizza. College students do this all the time, you know, it's like, this is how you do math, use pizza and and beverages, but that's a story for another day. Here's the elementary kids taking a look at um uh applied math at at Domino's, which is great. Also love this picture on the right-hand side, another elementary, it's Green Elementary. Love the picture, the kid kind of looking up at this veteran here. So you see this dichotomy here, but also the connectivity between the youth in our community and the veterans in our community, whether they've served in the military or not. And what are our green kids doing? Well, they're working on uh Valentine's car for our local veterans. So pretty awesome. Our kids are actively involved in the community, and I love the fact that we're inviting the community to be part of this journey with our kids. Want to talk for a minute about this strap plan. We talk about it often. I appreciate it talked about tonight. It is it continues to be a really, really important document. As we move forward, there's been a lot of political tension, a lot of people wondering about kind of, you know, where where we stand, and I've gotten questions from all sorts of people, state legislators, federal legislators, people in the community. I am so thankful that the board is committed to all students receiving the care and support and instruction they need to graduate with a plan for their future. I'm grateful we're focused on instruction and making sure our teachers have the things they need. I'm grateful we're focused on our leaders and making sure they have the tools they need. I'm thankful that we are focused on safe and inclusive environments and environments where kids feel safe and that kids feel heard and that kids are seen and respected. I'm also grateful that we are aligning our resources and thinking about how to provide systems that work. Whether that be within our multi-care systems of support, our rethinking the way we're thinking about finance, operations. This is helping us improve, and I'm grateful in the midst of a lot of change and questions about things that we're solid about what we're trying to accomplish. Want to talk a little bit about, um, I've seen, I've received a number of questions. I was hoping there'd be people tonight. I had several people say they were gonna come tonight. Maybe they're watching online, I'm not sure. But there's been some, you know, real questions about what's happening at the federal level, what's happening at the state level, and kind of what we see, kind of political theater, kind of playing out on on different sides of the aisle. I'm grateful that we have a strap plan. We know where we're going as a school district. I want to talk about just a couple of things real quick. A few, a few weeks ago, we had a funding pause uh on federal funding, and that was um it was a time where we were trying to have, you were trying to figure out, it was a great reminder for us, for me personally, about the re- how grateful I am for the resources we receive to support our children. So the funding pause was this moment of like, are we spending down some federal funding and how are we doing this? That was putting some things on hold around um IDEA, which is the legislation that supports our students with additional needs. Our title funds, which support our kids oftentimes furthest from opportunity we need to speed up. And also because we're a community eligibility provision district, in other words, we're, we feed all students, free ambassadors, all those things were on pause. Now, we were, of course, going to be still feeding our children, but the question was who was gonna kind of pay for that. So we had this kind of funding pause. There's questions right now about, you know, if you're following the media, what's gonna happen with the US Department of Education? Is there gonna be a restructuring? Is there gonna be a shutdown? I just want to let people know. I just want to let people know on the board, the community, we're working closely to build some contingency plans. There's, there are conversations that were, we continue to have with people. And what's important to realize on the Department of Education's side, we literally had people calling our district office saying, if kids can't eat, where can I drop the check off for students? And I'll talk about immigration in a minute, we had parents calling, wondering if their kids are going to be safe at school. We had parents wondering, you know, again, like students and parents wondering, are we safe to go to school? So lots happened, it's just important to talk about what's happened. Let me just clarify Department of Education, so this, the, the US Department of Education really has three roles, there's three main things that they do. There, there were about 4,400 employees there, about a $79 billion budget. It's going to be restructured. And we're already seeing some of that restructuring happen, okay? I'm not, my personal opinion on this, and I don't want to just ad lib here, but there's a chance we could see something like IDEA. And potentially title be moved to different departments potentially, this could happen, we could see the Department of Human Services taking on one of those. I'm not terribly concerned about the elimination of these programs. Because they have broad bipartisan support. But it's very clear, to be clear, with the community, there's things that the US Department of Education doesn't impact. It doesn't impact our policy. It doesn't impact the way we adopt curriculum, there's things it doesn't impact. The three main roles of the US Department of Education are these. They oversee all student loan, federal student loan, it's about $1.7 trillion. And IDEA and title. So we have people I trust at the federal level that have said no impact, people I trust have said expected 25% decrease in title funding, for example. It's not known, met with a policy advisor today, who works back in DC. So what I want people to know on the board and people listening in the community is this. We build contingencies for the unknown. Anybody who would stand up today and say they exactly know what's going to happen by the end of the year. On the federal stage, I would, I would just walk out anyway, I wouldn't believe that. But what we're doing is this watching and paying attention. I'll talk about budget here in just a minute, so. Again, the US Department of Education does some key funding, they have, they provide some key funding for us somewhere, about 12 to 13% of our budget comes through federal funds. It's very important, the funding aspect. I think we'll see changes in the department, but remember, it doesn't have an impact on many of the things we do. And there is a chance in this whole idea of shutting down the department, restructuring the department. My own personal belief on this, again, don't take it for, take it for what it's worth, just this is my opinion on this, is we could see a shift in where these bipartisan-supported. Funding streams come from, but I'm, I, we're, we're going to watch this. Is, would it have an impact if we saw less money, absolutely. Contextually, it's about $650,000 a month that we receive in federal funding. So if you think about, we've done a pretty good job ending fund balance, we're saving money. Not having federal funding would dramatically impact our ability to serve children, period. There's no doubt about it. But also remember that congressional decisions take a number of votes, there would have to be, you know, there would have to be some. Collective agreement between Republicans and Democrats to make some of these decisions, but will maybe where these current funding streams sit. Change of departments potentially, but we're going to watch that, so enough, just enough away on that. Immigration, let me talk about this for a minute, as I said before. We've had, we were able to kind of communicate with our staff, so first of all, I just want to thank our board for their care of students. The commitment you've had around single points of access is really, really helpful. Our Raptor system is very, very helpful. I've been in contact with city officials, county officials, want to give props to Sheriff Handlin, Chief Clopenstein from RPD. Our commissioners and others, you know, Jeff here, our district safety folks, to really make sure we have a process for potential immigration. Issues that may pop up. We will follow state laws surrounding immigration. And around law enforcement access to students and student information. What's really great for us is that we have single points of entry and there have been questions about what happens if ICE shows up and, and. You know, we view this like anytime law enforcement shows up, law enforcement shows up to our buildings, there's a process for that, they have to have a reason to be there. They go through the same process we go through, it's Raptor, we check, there's a vestibule. And if in, if in case there's a judicial subpoena someone has, which is what will be required. In this case, that's going to go either to Assistant Superintendent or myself. And we would just kind of work through that process, but I think it's important for our community to know. That our safety procedures in terms of access to students and our processes for safety are fully in place. And we do have what's called local apprentice, meaning when parents draft their children off, they're, they are in our care. That's what that means. There's, we have FERPA laws that don't allow us to share certain information, immigration information is one of those things with law enforcement officials. So we just viewed, there's been some fear about ICE and, and different things in the community. And we'll follow our, the state and local laws and our own procedures as it relates to that. School choice, I just put this in here as well. In terms of navigating shifts in federal policy, I just want to, just on the record, we know this already, but our district does support school choice. And we have lots of kids from, that live in our area that are in different schools. We have lots of students that are from other areas that are in our schools. And I'll just want to say that any reduction in federal funding would have a negative impact on the programs and services we can provide for our students. Whether students from our, you know, that live in our zip code or not that we serve. I want to talk a little bit about budget, there's been questions as we've, I mean, I've brought this to the, the board, I will continue talking to the board about this and to our community about this. And our staff. I think I started in December talking about PERS. And I want to just talk a little bit about budget prioritizations, investments and, and moving forward. So I want to first of all, I start by saying this. We're hopeful to receive a state school fund estimate from the Oregon Department of Education sometime early March, it's due, I think, between the 1st and the 16th of March. So we're looking forward to that. I also want to say this, we're in a biennium year, so this is, there's always a level of uncertainty in a biennium year. Because, so we're at the, we're at the back end, the second half of the biennium, moving toward the 25, 27 biennium. So every, so every time we're in a biennium, there's a level of uncertainty. The governor proposes a budget, but we need to adopt a budget before it's approved oftentimes by the Senate and the House, and so there's always a level of uncertainty. So I just kind of put this out there, it's a little more complicated this year, the uncertainty. Because of a few things, and I'll get to those in a minute, but let me start by just saying one other thing. So we have state school fund estimates coming. We're in the beginning of a biennium year, it's a long session, there's lots of conversations in Salem. We had some of us there today, just kind of working with some people and, and, and having conversations about some things. But also, I also want to mention before we jump into some of the PERS stuff, that. It's a very normal process for us to be looking at adjustments, things like enrollment. Are we getting return on this investment, so we're in the process of that very normal process of us saying, are we getting the outcomes that we want? How many students do we have? So we're also in that process, which is very normal for us of just where are we at, how many students do we have, as we look at ADM and some of those things. What's gotten a little more complicated, because again, we're in a biennium, we're taking a look at our enrollment, we don't have a state school fund estimate yet, we have a proposed budget, uh, budget from the governor. Again, this is kind of where a traditional biennium year is, we also have a couple of unknowns. Not completely unknown yet is the PERS increase in our PERS rates. And so we're working diligently to really get down to minutia of the direct impact fiscally for us. There are a couple of bills being proposed, there's some money PERS has, you know, are they going to use that on the unfunded actuary liability for that? Are they going to try to draw it on the rate? There's still some things happening at the state level, but we're really getting to the spot of saying, how much money? Will we have, how much, you know, fewer dollars will we have as a result of PERS? And we're getting close to that number. I would continue to advocate that we should consider, the board should consider. Trying to pay down some of that rate with some of the reserve funds we have, but we will need to make some adjustments. Some of the adjustments, again, come because of the normal way we do things, fewer, more students. But we likely will be needing to make some, some adjustments. What's complicated that as well is just some of the questions about federal funds. These federal funds have been consistently relied upon. And any adjustment in that consistency or reliability makes budgeting a little more difficult. That being said, we're prioritizing those investments and as we move through. This month and into March and start to make some decisions. I just want to let the board know, and for that matter, let our staff know. The process we go through in terms of adjusting will be a professional process. It's a process that won't be someone finding out through a board meeting or a, you know, a news report. It'll be if we need to make some adjustments, and again, we make adjustments often every year, those are the face-to-face conversations we have with people. And the board will become particularly involved in this through the budget process that will begin in April. Where those decisions that I make as a superintendent, want to be clear about that, those are decisions that I will make in some consultation, will be reflected in that budget document. All right, I want to just put a shout out here, you know, we're, we're really working on, we have a great community, I love this community, I'm thankful we live here. We're engaging some folks to industry leaders, education partners and other folks at the end of the month to take a look at our community goals. What we want as a community and ensuring our strat plan aligns with that, which I believe it does, and so we've got that event, you probably received the invitation, look forward to seeing you on the 27th. Last thing I want to bring up here real quick is, is a little bit about assessment, if you've read some articles around the NAP. Which is kind of the nation's report card. I want to talk a little bit about this. I want to start, let me start with graduation rates real quick. So we have, graduation rates came out for, for last year, we're about 80% of our students graduated. With, at the four, at four years. Dave talked about that tonight, again, we always have an interest in making, making sure that that rate climbs up. I do want to say this, it's important for me to say. We have a strong, strong commitment to a rigorous education. I'm going to just say this again, we have. An immovably strong commitment to a rigorous education. Part of the equation around. You know, engagement and around graduation for me is pretty simple, we have to increase opportunities for kids. Increase access for kids, give kids more choice in their learning and increase rigor. When we can do those things, we can make sure that kids are well-invested and you'll see our graduation rate climbing. I'm not going to speak poorly of anybody else, but. For places that have focused on the number and not on the student, it's a disservice. When we focus on the graduation rate and isolation of what's happening to get that rate, it's a disservice. And I, I will also say this, I'm grateful to live in a community and work in a school district that values all students. We don't game the system, the 80% we talk about are all of our students. We don't have places we put students so they don't count for our graduation rate. That's important, we believe all students can be successful. I will highlight this and, and, and this is really important data for us. 95% of our students at RHS graduated in four years if they had two or more CTE courses. So this is actually well above the state average, it's actually above our average from last year. So the board's decision tonight to approve some funding to increase CTE opportunities. Is really hopefully going to directly translate into a higher graduation rate. Again, I'll say this, 80% of our students graduated in four years, it's higher than that on the five-year completer. But 95% of our students who completed two or more credits in our CTE program graduated in four years. So there is work we need to do, as we've taken a look at our own mid-year data, as we take a look at the NAP. And Dave talked about this tonight, all schools have been involved in digging in, what does that data tell us? How can we improve? How can we better meet the needs of students, and we have work to do there. And I'll just again say, that's a commitment we make to improve outcomes for students. Moving forward, to make sure we have more opportunity for kids, more access for students, more choice in their learning and also increase rigor. Thank you.
Superintendent Corden, it's always great information, we appreciate all that you do. And the time that you spend just helping our whole state, so we commend you for that, thank you. Now we have our Board of Education reports, Director Hammerson, do you have anything that you would like to report?
No, I'm good, it's almost 11pm out here.
Okay, thank you so much, Director Cubic.
Yes, I was going to say Emily Leisure, cool. And it was great that we did the presentation. The other thing I wanted to note is I did attend a girls' basketball game. It was very interesting, things were really tuned on. Win or lose, you know, it was positive, there were a lot of fans there. But I wanted to give a shout out to 541 Radio. Who broadcasts our, our games, like football, basketball, and what small town America, I realize that. But live broadcasts of high school sports is just wonderful. That's it.
Thank you so much, Director Cubic. Director Cotton.
Thank you to Roseburg High School for hosting us tonight. I feel bad that we didn't get to get over to see, to see the CTE program stuff, but. The chair and I are gonna, and I know the rest of the board wants to do it, we'll split up, but we'll make an appointment to get over and, and see that. And the artwork, if you directors didn't get to see it, it is, it is really wonderful, anyway, thank you so much.
Director Krimmets, do you have anything that you would like to report?
Nothing really to add as a report, but again, thank you. Principal Victory, Vickery, for showing us the medical part, because that really was such a convincing. Really helped me a lot in seeing that. And also the, the artwork is amazing. They, we have some really talented kids. And just one more thing for the award winner, Emily. That just shows what, we have some really strong academic. Educators, educators here that we are lucky and that's part of our science, technology, engineering, math. That, that steam, and we emphasize that, and that's going to take our kids a lot further in life. And we have that quality of kids here, so, thank you.
Thank you, Director Krimmets, Directors Leoni.
I have more of a comment. You know, about the Department of Education, I mean, you brought that up. And, and I know that there's going to be, there's going to be some changes, the politics are, that we have now are going to definitely make an impact, especially on that, that department. And, but the narrative that you hear, a lot of narrative that I hear is, is, is negative. You hear a lot of negative comments about, about the, you know, it's the doom and gloom, you know, that department goes away, our funding goes away. I don't think that's the other side of that, the other side of the coin, is that the funding is not going to go through that filter. It might come directly to the state, it might mean more money for us. So I think that depending on what side of the spectrum you're on. You know, if you want to go with the doom and gloom, so be it. But there is, there could be some real positive things to it, it's called efficiency, part of the, that Doge thing. But we just need to be efficient, like we are with our school district, we're being more efficient as we do this, so. So again, I, right now, I'm just kind of holding off on going negative on it. I'm going to try to say neutral, maybe thankful, maybe this could be a better thing for us, I don't know, we'll find out.
Hugh Director Leoni and Director Schercliff.
I have nothing to say that would benefit the children.
Thank you. So I advise you, board, that all of our regular business has concluded and barring. So I advise you, board, that all of our regular business has concluded, and barring any objections, the regular meeting is hereby adjourned. Okay? I do announce that the board will be reconvening, reconvening into executive session, accession, it's getting late, wow. Pursuant to ORS 192.6602I to continue the superintendent evaluation process. So there will be no further board action this evening. So thank you so very much for coming. We appreciate your interest. The meeting is concluded.